Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the October fifth, twenty twenty one. Regular meeting of council. This will be our final council meeting as this council, so. I will make it a good one, I'm sure. Can I get a motion, please, that the agenda for the October fifth, twenty twenty one regular meeting of council be adopted as presented? And as this is councillor Curry's final meeting. We will let her make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, of the minutes of the September twenty first, twenty twenty one? Regular meeting of council be adopted as presented. Councillor Wilkinson will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carried. Moving on to public hearings, we have a public hearing for bylaw number two, two, six, three, the land use. Bylaw amendment, and just as a matter of. Process here, just want to let everybody know that we will have a presentation from staff, and then we will open it up from comments from the public. This is a public hearing, which means we're here to ask questions and gather information and not to engage in debate. So with that. I will hand things over to administration. Ms. Chan?
Good evening, council. Let me just share my screen here. And can everyone see my screen? Okay?
Perfect, thank you.
Awesome. So, good evening, council. My name is Mandy Chan. I'm the planning intern at the town of Edson. Tonight I have prepared a presentation on the land use by law textual amendments by law number two, two, six, three. For overview, I will start by providing the background information on the amendments. Then I would jump into the administration suggestions along with the amendments overview. Followed by the town's land use by law districts, sorry, land use district statistics and maps indicating where the associated. District is located in the town, and then in the very end, we will open up to any question that council may have for administration. For background, administration received an application from KI Asset Corporation. To amend the land use by law number two, zero, seven, zero, to add motel slash hotels as discretionary use. To the C two service commercial land use district to facilitate the development of a service establishment on the parcel. Under the special land use provisions, section seventy eight in the land use by law. A motel slash hotel is a rentable unit means a separate unit on a motel parcel used. Or intended to be used for the temporary dwelling accommodations of one or more person. Currently, hotel and motel is listed as permitted use in the C one retail commercial land use district as hotel or motel. C three highway commercial land use district as hotel and motel. And in C three eight business commercial slash light industrial land use district as hotel and motel separately. As you can see, there are inconsistency in the land use by law that address hotels and motel. Therefore, to ensure the consistency, administration proposed hotel and motel to be amended separately. As hotel and motel could not be applied for the same use. Furthermore, administration proposed hotel and motel as a discretionary use in the C two service commercial district. To allow the development authority to condition any approval given the potential impact on the neighboring parcel. As an amendment overview, there are several components to the amendments. The first one is to add the definition of hotel and motel to section six definitions separately. Second is to amend two of the commercial district which currently have hotel and motel. Together as one permitted use to separate the wording to ensure consistency and because it cannot be applied for the same use. Lastly, proposed to add hotel and motel separately separately as discretionary use in the C two service commercial district. For definition, administration proposed the amendments to read as on the left here hotel. Means a building providing accommodations for the public containing guest room served by a common entrance. As well as general kitchen and dining or other public rooms. On the right here is motels. Means a buildings or group of buildings designs for the accommodation of the public containing guest rooms. Each of which has a separate entrance entering from the outside of the building. This table here lists the land use district that will be adding hotel to the left and to the right is motel. The land use by law sections to each of the land use districts listed on the slide here is attached to the agenda package for council to review as conditions. And as an additions and reference material. To get a better understanding of how this amendment affects the town, administration generated this table here as an additional information. In total, four hundred and forty-two properties will be affected by the proposed amendments. The majority will be the C two service commercial land use district with one hundred and seventy-three properties. The least influence will be the C three A business commercial slash light industrial land use district. The slide here is kind of just create a visual aids to show where the affected land use districts are located within the town boundary. In summary, there are kind of four key takeaway message and points. So the first one is if by law two, two, six, three pass. It would add hotel or motel as a discretionary use to one hundred and seventy-three properties. That is currently known as C two service commercial districts. So this will potentially accommodates the needs of the local community. Providing a specialty service to the regions, increased tourism, thereby kind of facilitating the strong economic opportunities for the local business. Second point, on September seventh, twenty twenty one, first reading was given to by law number two, two, six, three. Public hearing was set to occur during tonight's council meeting. And at the at the time of the publications of the agenda, no registration for the public hearing has been received. The third point is that please note that if council give third readings to battle two, two, six, three. A development permits application would still need to be submitted and approved by the development authority. For the applicant's parcels of interest before a hotel or motel could developed on the site. And the last point is administration recommends that council give second and third readings to battle number two, two, six, three. Thank you for your attention, and we are open for any questions council may have for administration.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Chan, for your presentation, and we will open the floor to questions, council. Do you have any questions for administration? All right, I don't see any questions, and we have no registered speakers, so I will. Close the public hearing and we'll go to our next public hearing. Which is by law number two, two, six, four, land use by law amendments to revise billboard regulations. And we have Ms. Florizone with us. Take it away.
I will recuse myself. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, councillor Sorensen.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Carrie Florizone, senior planning manager with the town. And we are going to have technology work for me. Share screen. And I believe you should be seeing my presentation. Thank you. I'm here to present the by law amendment that discusses some changes to the billboard section of our land use by law. There was a recommendation brought forward to revise the regulations around billboards, specifically the five-year renewal requirement. Committee of the whole directed administration to draft a land use by law amendment to remove the timeline. And administration is proposing a by law to allow billboards as permanent structures. The proposed by law also clarifies where billboards are appropriate on larger parcels. Currently, under the land use by law, billboards are allowed in ten land use districts as discretionary uses. And are subject to the section one, zero, three, highway sixteen corridor overlay district. Which applies to lots adjacent to or visible from highway sixteen. In the overlay district, signs must identify onsite development facilities only, and billboards are not. Permitted within the district. In total, five hundred and eleven properties have the potential for development of the billboard and sixteen development permits are currently valid. The clarification that has been added to the amending by law. Is to clarify where billboards are appropriate. So the current text reads that. A billboard may be located within an urban reserve district or industrial district, wherein the sole opinion of the development officer. A parcel substantially undeveloped. And we're just hoping to provide clarification around that to developers. And have it revised to billboards within the urban reserve district, light industrial service district, light industrial and service district, Glenwood Service Industrial Commercial Commercial District. And heavy industrial district will only be considered on parcels where parcel parcel coverage in addition to parking facilities and outdoor storage. Amount to less than thirty percent of the parcel area. Of course, we are also proposing removals of section. One, zero, three, one, sub D and E, which speak to the time limits. So removing the condition in the land use by law that a billboard shall be immediately removed. Upon parcel development or on the expiration of the development approval term. And removing that a billboard shall be permitted for a maximum of five-year term. My apologies for a couple typos on this slide. There was first reading on September seventh. There is a public hearing tonight. There are no speakers registered for tonight's hearing. And the recommendation is to give second and third reading. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Florizone, for your presentation, council. We will open the floor to questions. If you have any questions or comments you'd like to make. Seeing none, oh, councillor Schernard.
Hi, thank you for your actual presentation, and I think we talked about this during committee the hall. So the maintenance and size and then the other questions someone asked me about electronics. That would be discussed later in development permit time, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anybody else have any other questions? Seeing none, and we have no registered speakers, we will close that public hearing. Councillor Sorensen, feel free to come on back. We have no delegations tonight, so we'll move on to reading of bylaws. Can I get a motion, please, that council gives second reading to by law number two, two, six, three? Councillor Sorensen will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? We did discuss it at committee a few weeks ago as well. It's pretty straightforward. With that, I will call the question. All those in favor? Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council give third reading to by law number two, two, six, three? Councillor Bevan will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carried, and I believe you will take another walk away there, councillor Sorensen. Can I get a motion, please, that council give second reading to by law number two, two, six, four? Councillor Schernard will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion carried, and can I get third reading to by law number two, two, six, four? Councillor Byer will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carried. All right, you're free to come back, councillor Sorensen. And we will move on to reports from administration. Can I get a motion, please, that council cancel the regularly scheduled? October twenty-six, twenty twenty-one committee of the whole meeting. Councillor Curry will make that motion, and I believe we have Mr. Lucas here that will. Give us an overview of the changes that are being outlined in the memo. Go ahead, Daniel.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Har. So as outlined in the RFD, these motions would set the date of October twenty-sixth at seven P M for the organizational meeting. To ensure that the statutory timelines envisioned by the MGA are adhered to. Namely, these statutory timelines require that an organizational meeting be held within two weeks of the third Monday in October. And of course, the proposed date of October twenty-sixth aligns with this requirement. Customarily, the organizational meeting is followed by a regular meeting of council, which the proposed motions would also schedule. Finally, I would just like to make a couple notes about about the swearing in ceremony. So typically, the organizational meeting is preceded by the swearing in ceremony. As all elected officials must swear the oath of office before commencing with any of the business of council following an election. Of course, the ongoing public health emergency poses certain logistical challenges to the conduct of the ceremony. And while council meetings are currently being conducted virtually for the town of Edson, there are some technical and potentially legal difficulties associated with an entirely virtual swearing in ceremony. Indeed, in reviewing the practices of eight other municipalities, the vast majority, that being seven. Are favoring some form of in-person or hybrid ceremony, typically modified so as to minimize the risk of transmission of COVID nineteen. When they administer the oath of office. So in administration's assessment, the most feasible way to complete the swearing in. In a manner which preserves the ceremonial significance of the event whilst minimizing the risk of transmission. And allowing for the organizational meeting itself to be held virtually is to film the ceremony in advance. This would most easily be done on the evening prior to the organizational meeting, so that would be October twenty-fifth. Councillors would be sworn in one at a time in the council chambers to ensure adequate physical distancing. The event would would be filmed during and then broadcast publicly before the organizational meeting the following day. So with that background and proposal in mind, I'll close my remarks and welcome any any questions, comments, or discussions that council may have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lukas for the information. And I will open the floor to questions. Council, you have any questions or comments or concerns? Councillor Wilkinson.
So it's a comment. Now, when Grand Yellow had a meeting in person, the county's meeting in person. I would hope that the new council and mayor could meet, and if they just had the RCMP officer in there, it certainly keeps the number of people down. Other people could be in a different room and zoom into it. I just think it's something that is a big deal, and I think all the newly elected people would like to be in that room enjoying that part.
All right. Thank you, councillor Wilkinson. Any other comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, I will call the question then. All those in favor? Councillor Bevan and councillor Wilkinson, are you in favor?
In favor of what? Of a virtual thing or an in-person?
Councillor Wilkinson, we have a motion for the council council, the regularly scheduled October twenty-six, twenty twenty-one committee of the whole meeting.
Okay, I can vote for that.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion, please, that council schedule the organizational meeting on October twenty-six, twenty twenty-one at seven P M? Councillor Schernard will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carried. And can I get a motion, please, that council schedule a regular council meeting immediately following the organizational meeting on October twenty-six, twenty twenty-one? Councillor Sorensen will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion carried. We have no information items, no sundry items. Council committee reports, we are going back to September the twenty-second. And we will start with councillor Sorensen.
Thank you. September twenty-second, I had a. Multiplex steering committee meeting. And then September twenty-ninth to October first, I was at the recycling council of Alberta conference. It was great to be back in a conference, and. This is a favor of mine over the years. Great conference, about half the size is normal, but still great presentations. A lot of focus on demolition waste and how to handle that and keep it out of the landfill. Lots of great ideas that way. I got a tour of the Banff biomass generator station. Banff heats for their large public buildings with. A biomass generator basically burning wood pallets. And generating steam and heating buildings, and they burn a ton a day, a ton of waste a day. And benefit from heating their buildings, so it's a win-win. As well as Minister Jason Nixon of Environment and Parks gave a presentation. And he he flat out said that there's a. A document in front of the in front of the premier for this fall to approve EPR enhanced. EPR means producer responsibility. And so hopefully this fall it will be approved, and then it'll take probably. Probably eighteen months to get implemented and actually be in in operation, but that's great news. It'll save the town a ton of money if that actually gets approved. And I'm really excited. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sorensen. Councillor Wilkinson.
I have nothing to report. I had no committee meetings.
Thank you, councillor Wilkinson. Councillor Schernard.
I have to say the same thing. Sadly, I have nothing to report due to COVID cancellations.
Thank you, councillor Schernard. Councillor Bevan.
On September the thirtieth, we had a committee futures meeting up in Hinton. And there we had an elder come in and do a smudging horse and that. We all went to the green square and was outside. And was very well put together on the part of community futures and that. Everybody participated in that. Then we went back in and we had ourselves a meeting. And the meeting went really well in that. Some of things was. Business walks are going to be after the election here in October sometime, hopefully in that. Strategic plan approval that was updated here and that. And what they were finding was. There is a. Business are fine, there's nobody to work, there's no laborers, people are not vaccinated and stuff like this and that. Also, they give out a hundred and nine triple R F loans at forty thousand dollars. Each, and what Community Futures gets back is approximately, I believe, ninety-three thousand dollars. After that. What else here? Can't remember right now, so I will leave the rest up to Jackie. She was there.
All right. Thank you, councillor Bevan and councillor Byer.
Thank you. On yesterday, October fourth, I had the first youth council meeting of this season, which councillor Sorensen also attended. And we had six new youth counselors, so that was really exciting, and seven returning youth counselors. Which have many of them have several years experience, so it's great to see them already kind of stepping up to the plate and. Being active and mentoring the six new ones, so it will be a great a great term again. And that was all I have.
All right, thank you. I had on. September the twenty-second, a multiplex steering committee meeting, and then. The youth council meeting yesterday before my connection dropped out, and thank you to Seal Beverage as well, giving a review of. Municipal government. And we will leave the last committee report to councillor Curry.
I thought you actually maybe forgot me there for a second. I had the steering committee, multi complex steering committee on the twenty-second. And then the community futures on the thirtieth. Not too much to add to what councillor Bevan had to say. I think just really important that after the election, who's ever sitting around this table, I think it'd be really important to get a copy of our strategic plan. They did a really fantastic job. The ladies that came in and ran for ran it for us back in June. Created an amazing document with really. Like set out action plans and who's doing it. So I think it'd be really important for council to see that. And to be aligned with that, and part of one of the action plans is working and collaborating as a region. And I know that Nancy has it on that, that one of her duties will be to be connecting with obviously all the C O's, but with new councils and presenting as she comes in. And so, yeah, it was a really great meeting, and like councillor Bevan said, it was our the first truth and reconciliation day, so we were very. Fortunate to have an elder come down from Grand Cash to do a smudge with us. So much appreciated to Nancy for that. And then I would just say that they've noticed a few changes of what is being wanted. And so they're kind of just aligning what services are needed. O H and S has not had a lot of uptake, which is kind of surprising. With COVID and such, but they're just looking at that and just. Just mixing up their programs a little bit and a little bit of a reorganization. They did lose their business analyst. That was with them for almost ten years. He has moved on, so just looking at some new reorg, but doing really great. And if any of you didn't see, it was Nancy's ten-year anniversary with the organization. So if you see her, be sure to congratulate her. And that is my final report.
Thank you, councillor Curry, councillor Bevan, and then councillor Wilkinson.
No, it's okay. I didn't know Jackie was going to mention it, but she did bring it up, so no problem.
All right. Thank you, councillor Wilkinson.
I just have a question. Three of you, I think, were at the steering committee for the multiplex. I'm really getting asked a lot about where we're at with that, and I just don't know. I would like an update if possible.
Yep, so the steering committee met, reviewed. Some of the priorities, I guess you would say, in terms of the building. And reviewed the documents that will be going out publicly here in the next short while, within the next few weeks, I would say. Might even be next week, Seal Beverage, I'm not sure. About what the requirements are for the project, for the. For the firms that they can bid on, and it'll set the priorities of, you know, what's within that project. I don't know, Seal Beverage, if there's anything more really to add to that. It's quite a comprehensive.
I believe you've captured.
Go ahead.
My apologies. Mrs. Har has captured where we're at. Essentially, yes, within the next few weeks, the public or the the R F would go out.
Okay, so that basically. Covers it, councillor Curry? Anything like that?
I just wanted to add, because I know it's been talked about lots, that the project manager seemed very optimistic. About our budget and and really excited about the. Design project model that we went with, and that they they really think we're going to get a lot of creative different ideas. Unfortunately, because we went with that model, whatever comes in from that R F P, we do actually get to have, we can utilize any of them. So even if it's not the design that we decide on, if it's from another one, we can change it up and do that. So it was really nice, I felt, to hear that they didn't have concerns with our budget, which was really nice to hear.
And we are going with a design build, and each pre-qualified firm is being paid a stipend so we can use whatever they submit. So even if they don't win the bid, we get to use the material, which is great for taxpayers. Councillor Bevan.
Yeah, on the multiplex there, the other day I was up in Hillendale visiting their. Seen a truck out in the field there, and they were digging holes and doing that. I stopped out and asked them. What was going on? And he said that they were doing more test sampling and that because some of the. Test holes came back with a high lead concentrate. And I kind of asked him, I said, well, what are they and where are they? He said, every place you see a white. P C V pipe sitting up in the air ground is what tested high lead content. And he was doing more test holes. Did you get any results back on those or what they found?
I know nothing of what you speak of. Councillor Bevan.
Through the merits, councillor Bevan, we will most definitely look into that. I have not been advised of anything of that sort. Was that on the Trans Mountain? On that piece of property?
No, it was to the north of Trans Mountain, and that there's a break in the berm there, you can drive down, and there's that kind of big slough, it's all dead with the water and that. He was up there probably about another fifteen feet. Right in almost the center where we want to build. And then as you look towards the west, you'll see three more white. P C V pipes, I guess, is what they are sticking up, and that's where they were going to go. Retest again and that. And I would just thought, okay, they dug, he probably dug, I would say. Eight or nine holes all the way around those. Eight or nine holes all the way around those uh those pipes in that. So to me it was, I was kind of concerned if uh. We had uh something in that ground that we didn't want, it was gonna cost us a lot of money to, you know, get it prepared.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, uh councillor Bevan, I don't, I don't know what uh, what's been going on there, but uh. I'm sure administration will figure out, um of course, Trans Mountain worked in that area as well, so. Uh we will move on, uh we have no financial items.
One question, when are the names of the youth council uh members gonna be?
I can send those to you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Uh we have no financial items, questions? From media and public regarding items from this council meeting?
Your worship, we have no questions from media or public tonight.
All right, sounds good. Uh before we move into camera, this is the final council meeting of this council. And uh just uh some food for thought. Uh over the last term, uh this council has made over nine hundred motions. Uh dealing with all sorts of different matters from planning to health and safety to infrastructure. Uh I've been incredibly honored to work with this group of individuals, I'm going to. Uh miss working with this council and I look forward to what the new council brings. I also like to thank councillor Curry as she is moving on to greener pastures or colder pastures maybe. Uh for your uh your commitment to our community the last four years and not seeking reelection and I'm sure. Uh some of us will be around the table, some of us may not be following October eighteenth, but I certainly hope our electorate gets out and votes. On October eighteenth and uh councillor Curry, is there anything that you want to say as a farewell?
Oh, thank you. Um no, I I echo what the mayor says, this has been a tremendous experience. Um I have loved serving with all of you. Um I think we have done amazing work and we have done it respectfully. Um I have enjoyed um our conversations, uh I will miss bantering with you councillor Sharnard. Um it has been a great time, uh and as I say to everyone, Edson is a wonderful, wonderful community. Um and you guys have, we've all done great work, uh I'm so proud to have been a part of it. Um I'm not leaving the community, I'm making a career move, um but I love this community and I will definitely be back. Um so thank you very much.
All right, thank you, uh council, open the floor to anybody else that wants to add anything. Before we go into camera, councillor Sharnard.
Hi, yes, I'm gonna actually echo what everyone's saying, it's been a pleasure working with seven and one of the councillors mentioned. It's too bad the seven of us can't move forward for another term. Uh councillor Curry, all the best and I agree. Um a lot of our discussion has been heavy, uh but that is a bonus, I don't expect all of us to agree, so thank you for your comments and. Good luck and good luck to all the other people running and do send us a postcard when you get up there and show us all the snow.
Don't worry, guys, I'll be watching the live streams. I still pay taxes here, I still own my house, I'm gonna be, I am gonna be questioning whoever's at this table. You haven't heard the end of me.
All right, anybody else? If not, I will, oh, CEO Beverage.
I just wanted to uh, you know, all, yes, although it has been a short time with this council, I do think it has been a most um. Uh that was a large honor to work with each and every one of you, so thank you for the opportunity to do so. And I look forward to uh continuing our relationship past the council chambers um following this if if. If uh you don't happen to be here, thank you.
All right. Thank you, CEO Beverage, and with that, I will take a mo- motion to go into a closed meeting session. Councillor Wilkinson will make that motion, all those in favor? Motion carried. All right, I think we have everybody back, two, three, four, six, all right. Uh can I get a motion, please, councillor Curry?
Uh yeah, can I put a motion on that council direct Mayor Sahara to provide C O Beverage with a written performance evaluation? And that her probation period end immediately with no monetary change.
All right, thank you. Uh would you like to speak to that motion councillor Curry?
Um yeah, just with the um election coming, um we just think that it would, I think it would be a. Good time to remove the probation period for C O Beverage, she's been with the community for four months. Um and has more than shown um how qualified she is. Um and has done a fantastic job, so I think that it would um be to the community's benefit to remove that. Um probationary period and I also think um as the outgoing council. Um that it only um is right that we provide her with a written evaluation um before um the election.
All right, thank you. Any other further questions, comments or concerns? Seeing none, I will call the question, all those in favor? Motion carried and councillor Curry, can I get a motion, please, for a German? Thank you councillor Curry, all those in favor?
Now this is for Christine, I hope it works, hang on.
Oh.
No. No, it's not going to. I've got a little clip here, oh. She said, did we take a chance? And then we did.
Have a great night, everyone, it's been a pleasure, thank you.
Good night.
Hi.